No, no.
I've read parts of it. It is painful.
It is painful, isn't it? How about you, Rob? Have you read it?
I've read parts of it.
Parts of it, right. Does it apply to a small board of five people? No, it's designed for parliamentary procedure of five hundred people in Congress.
Sure, it's Congress and now UK. I thought it was designed for UK.
Well, so. So there are other rules of orders out there that are trying to make, simplify life by not requiring you to adhere to a very strict, rigorous Roberts. And one of them is Martin.
So I assume Roberts was the guy's last name. Is Martha the person's first name?
I have no idea. I've never met Martha, so.
Okay. I'd never heard of it till today.
Was it sure if it's Roberts with a O C P S or?
Roberts.
Roberts, like Peter Roberts.
Whatever you want to make it, I guess. So anyway, part of Martha's rules of order is to enhance dialogue, avoid, get discussion going. One of the things is don't have.
Thank you.
Permanent she.
Okay. I didn't realize such things.
Sorry. Got so curious, Tracy. Yeah.
Pleasantly, I sit here behind myself.
There's an awful lot of ground between here and Portland.
Yeah, there's an awful lot right on Top Hat Road. We need some water.
Now, I see they're already picking potatoes.
Yeah.
Still have potatoes planted down in front of your house?
This year, yeah. It rotates. This year, corn, potatoes, right? Corn, potatoes. Sometimes they do alfalfa.
Oh, really? You put the crumb on fingers?
I think so, yeah.
My son's best.
One time, over on two thirty-two, they did sunflowers.
Oh, really?
Oh, really.
We tried growing sunflowers in Arista County a long time ago. Every bird in Arista County found sunflowers first.
I have like a half a dozen growing in my garden in my backyard. I think it'll be a lot more than that. I use a little bit too much than we do, so no talking through, no keeping. One of the green bean plants with six green beans.
Oh, my.
Yeah. Two corn stalks, that is the two beans. But spaghetti squash, lots of spaghetti squash. I can't wait.
Yeah, one of them I found forty.
No, because the state domain is back.
Well, my sister-in-law told me to just, because I wanted to get a small, like ten by twelve garden. So, yes, they, uh. And my sister-in-law, who, who, oh, this side, okay.
We have an application. I'm distributing. I've already distributed it to three members, okay? I'm distributing it to two others. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, correspondence that I have already had above this application, do I share that with both of you also?
If it's correspondence, it needs to be entered into the record.
I am gonna enter it into the record tonight.
Again, we're not discussing, we're just.
Why not?
We're just announcing.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm keeping my ducks in a row.
You don't have to give me a copy of it, but you're gonna read it a lot.
I'm gonna read it a lot. Yeah.
Goes right into the record.
Yeah, all right.
Are you gonna watch it here or watch it on TV?
Right. Either one. So did you understand that I can't actually do the finding effects tonight when I sent you that? Because it's at this meeting. It comes to this meeting again.
Does it involve meetings?
So the finding effects aren't really on this agenda.
I realize that. I wasn't about to put out a third.
Yeah.
A third amendment to the, to the agenda. It's easy to have to sit there.
Oh, no, no, yeah.
It's tabled till the next meeting.
Yeah. Is Peter bringing plans, sir?
I think so.
Okay. I hadn't heard from him, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
I have to, the finding effects.
Yeah, let's.
Includes every meeting that.
People, we got twelve minutes before the meeting starts, so let's hold off on the business, please.
I'm gonna go longer on the parking lot.
Yeah, why don't you go get your pink hat? Go straight.
Do you like my efforts?
I love your efforts.
Okay.
So would what cap though? Like, nothing changed from.
I know.
When we had it as a lodge and then Shipyard had it for, I don't know how many years.
The point I'm trying to make with the state domain is the fact that I'm not qualified in any way. She performed through any of my training.
And I think either you or Dave Bonney has been signing.
Dave Bonney didn't sign them. I went back and looked at them. He hasn't signed them. I have two white ones. No signature. Unless he scanned it, sent it, I don't know. But the ones I have in the file are blank. The whole appendancy is blank.
I like to look at my, I have like the last one, which is at the Summit Hotel and stuff.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure those got filled in.
Well, one of the first questions I was asked is, is there a pump station at Whitecap that pumps it up? Because the ponds are uphill.
Yes.
But that's my point to the state.
I don't know this stuff, right.
You know?
I'm just saying, what's put in?
But, but again, there's an LPI. Why am I authorizing any of this? I have nothing to do with the overboard jurisdictions. That's the part that the Health Department in the state domain with their unfunded mandate keep putting back on the municipalities, sir? Not our job. It's DEP's job. I mean, they, they permit. Yes, they do the whole system, yeah.
And, and, and they, and you guys.
Why does that sound like a four-page?
Right. Yeah. It's just, it's just the. It's the lack of responsibility that the state domain takes for the laws they passed. And then they just make up these random forms that people think we're all just gonna sign blindly. My boss is telling me not to sign it. I'm gonna do it. I'm full. So it's just one of those things that just frustrates me from the state. Nothing to do with Sunday River. I've got, I've got no beef at all with that, and I know the system functions properly. So you know, the state domain does this. We have no say on appendancy. Everybody asked us. And my boss at the state level is like, no, no, Joel, you don't sign that. You're not trained. Okay.
I'm just hoping to open November first.
Okay, I'll work on that for you.
It's not like we changed anything.
I know, I know. And I feel bad because.
We just stopped leasing at the Shipyard. We wanna put it on our own.
William, this poor dude got an earful from me this morning. And he's like, I, 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 I'm just working here. Yeah, same thing.
We thought even like we did any remodeling, you know?
What was going in there?
Huh?
And the extension of the food court?
Well, no, um, well, I, you know, marketing works.
No, no, go on, yeah.
Don't boss it up.
I'm just trying to get an eating establishment license.
Yeah, so?
Yeah. The liver license is, Roberta signed off on that. Selectable, that's on its way to state.
Yeah.
The dance hall license got sent off to.
So there'll be people shaking like, yeah.
Eating establishment license, which looks like. Thanks, Joel.
Yeah. Don't fuck building people.
Guys, you know, don't know that. I've been out for the, of course, I never. Did they go for the, uh, I don't know. I don't know. I didn't take them.
She just drives badly. She doesn't go down into it.
I drive like every single day.
But she doesn't really go down in there.
I've gone down into it for a number of reasons, for various meetings and functions and stuff. I just didn't look around and just, oh, there's the health department.
By the way, Joel, there's a couple of pump stations.
North Peak Pump House is up there.
Oh, I'm sure there are. And that, but.
Saw that one. I went to North Peak, got an ice cream.
Didn't waste any time, did it?
No, the North Peak gates this year.
Right, but.
But North Peak.
That's the thing I tried to express, the state.
I don't know.
I just came up with a peak.
Oh, wow. That's, that's, I only have like two or three.
Yeah. Yeah. How many do you have?
There's a bunch of them.
I've counted fifteen.
Oh, boy.
There's a bunch of them.
Oh, look at them. They're trying to fatten up before they fly itself in another three, four weeks.
We're going through two quarts of sugar water a day.
Wow. I only have one. And I think it's a female, because she's dull color, so.
Yeah, I've got, I've got two and maybe three.
Yeah?
Like, but it's funny because, you know, there's, there's one that's sort of stuck with a suction cup to my big picture window. And then in the backyard, there's a big tall shepherd's hook, because the room is down.
Right.
So it makes it even to my dining room window. And they'll be eaten. And you'll see them like fly up. And then you see them come down.
And the thing is, they burned off those calories just doing that.
Yeah. But sometimes they'll just sit on the shepherd's hook and stuff and hang out and stuff.
I, yeah, the one I watch early in the morning, I mean, it's barely light. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Agendas are there, and then the draft minutes they'll be voting on are both in two separate piles there.
Okay.
Oh, I better get some. And she wasn't expecting anybody back here.
Already went down most of them.
Okay. Please sign in. Tell your brother. It sounds like he's got a lifter going in his truck. His engine is so loud.
I want to tell him. He isn't alone.
Tell him to go over to McDonald's. There's a tram going around, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're having a dog, dog sale. I don't know what he, if he's fussy or not.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Both pages.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get it all done.
Yeah. I'll be walking home, but extending it every time.
Get that email turned already? I'll put it back up here just so we can see if it shows up.
So I'll keep you posted about September, um, third. I might be somewhere just to take, record the four minutes and send me that.
Are you talking to me?
Anybody wants to listen.
I, I didn't, I didn't. I'm just, all right.
Well, I pick my dog up tomorrow from service.
Okay.
So I may need someone, September third meeting, to just record the meeting.
I may have to have Lori or Amy take care of that for me.
I will not be here, yeah, September third.
I have two meetings that night. Well, one is by law. Pick which one you want to be.
Jules.
DNA. Too many hats.
But one of these guys might be able to take her forward and then.
Yeah.
I mean, probably able to leave long enough to kind of up the width, like, you know.
Yeah.
But to stay here the next day or whatever, but.
Yeah. Hi, there. How are you? Good, thank you.
Sign in for, please, sir.
You need to see who this person is.
Doesn't have a name tag on, but.
Probably figure it out, huh? Ted.
Close start.
Hey, Peter.
Hey, dude. Sorry, I heard you. These two guys have been out.
We came out of executive session and right after scheduling a meeting, we'll resume at six PM. So is it just, you want to be?
No, we did that. And, um, two separate meetings.
Okay, all right. I just was wanting to ask you that.
Two separate meetings.
As far as I can see, this, we advertised two separate meetings.
Yes, we did, right.
Of course, if they moved the regular meeting at the five o'clock, that would have confused or.
We would have been a bunch of people sitting here for no reason.
Who's your dad?
The next morning, they get up. Probably gone. What about all the Hummies?
Oh, no.
Was it the pre-mix stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think you could, I don't think it's on the phone, man. Still, it's like.
Yeah, she messed it up.
I didn't know years past that I was supposed to.
So they can all see that.
And just the yeast and the bacteria in the air will ferment it. So, Peter. When Carson gets his, his engineer's ticket.
Next week?
Does he still have to go out to get coffee?
Have I ever said I have to get coffee?
No.
That's how you.
I picked up doughnuts, doughnuts, but not coffee.
Big one?
Yoki, Eki, you all ready?
Time's you.
Roll.
Good evening. This is the August twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Town's New Reimane Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker, and I am the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding, and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the material created or received by the board that relates to the board's deliberation, unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or if you would like to have access to any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded by the board's recording secretary. If you would like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town's administrator. I would also like to welcome Western Hill Access Television and its viewers. If you are physically present and have not already done so, please sign in at this time.
Everybody has signed in?
This is a working session of the planning board. Maine's Freedom of, Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during meeting. However, as chairperson, I may allow exceptions when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow the butter to address the board. By Nurey's planning board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by thirty-minute increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each thirty-minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussions will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business. Sunday River Skiway Corporation, South Ridge Bicycle Park, application number twenty-five dash two eight eight. Review and sign the final plans. Board Appeals Decision and Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law, dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Timberline TH LLC Appeal Application. Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law, Sunday River Skiway Corporation, South Ridge Bicycle Park, application number twenty-five dash two eight eight. Prior to attending to the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures, first of which is attendance. For section two dot D of the Nurey Planning Board Ordinance, amended June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I must first establish that a quorum is present. A quorum consists of two voting members. Members of the board are myself, John, Gooch Gautier, and Heidi Marata. All three of us are present. Let the minutes show that we have a quorum. We also have two alternates, Meredith Hera and Rob Fates, both which are present here tonight. Having ascertained that a quorum exists, I will now move on to reviewing voting eligibility. This will be a little muddled as we proceed in the meeting tonight, and there will be different eligibilities at different times. On the matter of old business, the Sunday River, application two eighty-seven, two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight. Members who are eligible to vote be Gooch. Meredith and Rob. On, because both, well, I recuse myself, my, excuse me, Meredith is not eligible. So just Gooch and Rob are eligible for, for that. I was recused because I'm an employee of Sunday River, as is Meredith. And Heidi was not on the board at the time and did not have, uh, did not, had not had the required exposure, for lack of better words.
That's good work.
So we'll work with that as we go through. But for any new business tonight, barring any recusations or other things, we do have a full board. Any questions so far? Okay. Let's go on to minutes of the prior meeting. First of all, we have minutes of the annual organizational meeting held on August sixth, twenty twenty-five. This was a continuation of the August, of the July second, twenty twenty-five meeting. Does any member of the board have any edits or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the annual organizational meeting continuation of that was held on August sixth.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the board's annual meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made with a proper second to approve the minutes for the annual organizational meeting continuation of that was held on August sixth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Let the record show that the minutes were approved. Next, we have the regularly scheduled meeting held on August sixth, twenty twenty-five. Does any member of the board have any edits or comments on these minutes? Gooch, did you, were you all set with the, the portion of the, those minutes that you chaired?
Yeah.
Hearing no discussion, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, August sixth.
Second.
A motion with a proper second to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting that was held on August sixth has been made. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Let the min, let the minutes show that the minutes were, let the minutes show the minutes were approved. All right. With the preliminaries done, let's move on to tonight's business. The first order of business is correspondence received. I believe, um, we received what?
Uh, you have the new submittal packet for application two five two eighty-six. That arrived this afternoon. I have electronic. If anybody wants it via email, I can forward that, but I handed out hard copies to planning board members here. Come on it, Becky. Come on it. I, the other email that I sent, I will handle under CEO reports.
Gooch, since I have been recused from anything to do with application twenty-five two eighty-six, and therefore you will be leading the board's review, I need to ask you to state for the minutes, any review deadlines that start with the official receipt of the resubmittal application.
Oh, my. Um. According to our advice here, we are to review this.
Well, what, what, what does happen? Sorry.
The question to Gooch, since I have been recused from anything to do with application twenty-five two eighty-six, therefore, Gooch will be leading the board's review, I need to ask him to state for the minutes, any deadlines or timelines that start with the official receipt of the resubmitted application.
May I answer that, Mr. Chairman? May I answer that, Mr. Chair, Vice Chairman?
Sure.
I've conferred with the town attorney on that, as well as the appellate attorney, and there is no timeline for this review.
Okay, so.
It's not like it's a brand-new application. We don't have those thirty and sixty, and we don't have all of those timelines.
So we are to review it as if it were a new application?
We will when we get to that, but that's not the question right now.
Okay.
But there are no timelines with this. There's no, there's no clock ticking.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that good for you, Ted?
Yeah.
So I'll just send the minutes.
Yeah.
You're the one who's gonna be chairing that, those sessions.
Thank you.
Don't thank me. What's my doing? Okay. Moving on to old business at this point. The old business that is on the agenda, the new business that's on the agenda, and the findings of fact that have been on the agenda. I have been recused, or I have recused myself for the old business and the findings of fact because I'm an employee of Sunday River. I have been directed to recuse myself for anything to do with the application twenty-five dash two eighty-six, Timberline TH. I therefore let the minutes show that I am standing down as chairman.
I will recuse myself for the Sunday River portion because I'm a team member of Sunday River.
Okay. Let the minute show that Meredith and Ted have recused themselves and are now sitting in the audience. And.
I don't need to recuse myself. I can vote.
Okay, so it's Ted and I, I mean, Rob and I. Assuming you make me another alternate.
You can raise him up.
Okay, Ted, Rob, I would like to raise you up to being a full planning board member for this business. How's that sound?
I can second that.
Yeah, you can. Okay. It's been moved. It's been seconded that Rob be risen to full board member. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Okay, let's carry. Rob's it, and you're not participating.
I can participate in the discussion. I just can't vote.
Yes. Is that, yes, this is true.
That's what, that's what you did last time.
For Sunday River. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Peter, what you got for us?
So, um, at the last meeting, the board gave conditional approval for our South Ridge Bicycle Park application for, um, two conditions. One was to get two typos in the application, and the other was to pay the correct, um, application fee. So let's see if those are correct before we get too far into this.
I'm gonna go back there afterwards.
Uh, Peter Roberts, Sunday River Skiway Corporation. So what I did was I printed three, um, copies of the application that were revised, uh, form ten point four, narrative, um, for the record, and then for each of the board members. I just printed the papers that were actually revised. So I got one review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me get around to those things. Did you check them?
Yes, right after I checked the deal on the American.
I don't think I checked them. I think I stayed in the last meeting.
So the phased, the phasing plan that we presented in the last application asked for the application fee to be the one-tenth of one percent of phase one construction costs.
Yeah.
Subsequent fees will be paid at the kickoff of subsequent phases based on whatever the market value of construction is at that time. Then there was the $250 preliminary.
I heard it was like a $250, but then I didn't know what the other fee was. Thank you. I completely forgotten, Peter, that you hadn't paid these.
And then the revised application, they got, these are the same application as you have in your hands, just with the two new pages and then a revised spreadsheet to indicate that it's the final.
Yeah. But it's revised, the revision made from the following. Becky, tell me when you're ready. From Sunday River Skiway, I received two checks. Check number 00097860, $475.
What's that been giving?
Yes. And then check number 0098321, $250. Paid in full.
So with Becky's notes finishing up, I think the conditions of approval than that and so the last item of business is just assignment.
Just print out right here?
Yeah.
Becky, black ink or blue?
They don't go to the registry, so I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, good. So do you want to come here? Just come here?
I don't know if you can spitch for.
Peter Roberts has handed me a couple pieces of paper. And it is titled, "New UDRO Application for Form 10.4 Revised 8, 1925. Six typos, items two and seven." And it has only two C's in seven. And on are listed 11 different items that have been.
Just the third one I think got changed because it was shown. So two C's. Two C's, because it used to have verified parking twice, but two C that came to Austin County Sheriff. And then number seven, previous one said C drawing sheet two. It was corrected to C drawing sheet four.
Yes. So I believe application number. 25-288 is not complete.
Well, it was complete and approved the conditions of approval have been met. So we are to proceed to sign.
Sounds good to me. Yeah.
I think it's just Gooch and Rob signing the items.
Okay.
Because they were the only two voting members. Right.
So should I make a motion that the application has been amended? No?
Well, you can make a motion that the conditions of approval have been met.
Okay. I make a motion that the.
Conditions of approval.
Conditions of approval for application 25-288 have been met. Seconded, huh? They've moved and seconded that the. Conditions of approval for application 25-288 have been met. All those in favor?
One.
So now we can proceed to sign the paperwork.
Yeah.
Do you want to turn that off while we do that, or?
On the composite, yeah. It's a true big one, it's just two of you guys. Okay, we're paused.
Okay. Oh, way up there. Mr. Chairman, you go first. Do you just have to sign one? No, sign all three.
All three, please, yeah. I always love going back to old permits, you see, and John's signature. It's so neat.
It is. Minor process.
Yeah, that's great. Nobody's forging yours.
Keyboard guy.
You want two, one?
I'm fine with just one.
Okay.
We're recording again, one of the plans, the plans have been signed. Do you want a copy of these?
Yeah, I'll go back to what I could.
Yeah, that's fine. Maybe I'll play it back.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Can I get these to me now? Because I already did this. I'm providing a fast tool.
Thank you. Thank you, Gooch.
Thank you.
All set? This is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got this here?
Mr. Chair, I will rejoin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate it. Let it be known that we have signed the final plan for application 25-288. And.
Oh, so just Meredith was, okay.
Yes, and Meredith has.
Rejoined.
Returned. New business. Board of Appeals' decision and findings of fact and conclusion of law dated 30 July 2025, Timberline TH LLC Appeal Application.
At this point in time, I will recuse myself from any discussion. So the only thing we've been advised to do tonight is accept the new material from Mainland on behalf of Timberline TH LLC. And you all have a copy of the remand. So your task for the next two weeks is to review the material, just like any other application.
Okay.
Okay. That's per the planning board's attorney, is that? That's per the planning board's attorney, Gray Brown, correct.
Okay, and you have looked this over.
I have.
And you have concluded a, an email.
I have. Would you like me to read that in the record?
Sure.
Uh huh. Fine, yeah.
Do I have that email in here, too?
I don't know that yet, hang on. I don't think so, Becky.
Okay.
Here we go. So this correspondent started with Michael Barnes from Mainland Development Company. He was asking me, this is Joel, we're printing the village at Timberline today for submittal tomorrow. Can you confirm? Eight packages, two full-size, six 11 by 17 electronic copy emailed to you. Thanks, Michael Barnes. I replied, that's accurate, thanks. Michael got back to me the following, yesterday on the 19th, and asked, Joel, the link below contains the application package and plans for the village at Timberline. Files are big, so let me know if you have any issues downloading or opening. And there was a link to their electronic files. I wrote back today after a review of the hard copies that came in pretty much the same time I received the email copy. And I see C Rick Dunton, who is also part of this email chain. I wrote, hello, guys. I've scanned the submittal and come up with a list of items that are either inconsistent or incorrect. Front page, this is a major subdivision, not minor subdivision. Form 10.2, book and page are incorrect. Attachments in 10.2, there is a letter asking for the HISS waiver, but under 10.4, you check the note box under submission waivers. These are just bullet points, just going down through, just so. It's hard to, I don't even know what to call that little squiggle line, so it's a bullet. Your fire protection statement is incorrect. NFPA standards, stated standards in the UDRO is NFPA 13, specifically NFPA 13R for multi-unit housing under the State Fire Marshal's Office website. 10.3-5A, unit numbers are on plan S 2.1, not S 1.2. Also on 10.3, what does APP stand for? In the application, what I'm referring to there is it lists non-applicable, and then if not, if it is applicable, it's, you know, with a plan number, what is that? In the plan box, I wrote APP, and I didn't know what that stood for. I do not see any plans with that designation. Also, L 2.1 is not in the packet. 10.3-22 does not show the widths of existing roads adjacent to the parcel, Skiway and Timberline. 10.3-23, no street names are on C 2.1. It is on plan C 5.1, but it's inconsistent in this submittal. 10.3-30, S 2.1, not S.1, not S 1.2, sorry. I think it's just a typo, someone's just typing too fast. Third page under tab C, the CAI overlay map. I don't know what this is depicting. It appears to be the same map overlay at a tighter scale as the last page in tab three. Please explain. Plan C 2.1, what is the 10-foot-wide driveway between the developer parking and the turnaround? It's a hammerhead on the plan, on C 2.1. I don't see any phasing plan, is that off the table now? Thanks, Joel. And I'll get you a hard copy of this. So this was just our review of what they submitted, and just very quickly, some things that I threw back at the developer today to get back to me with. He did reply to this after I had already printed this and just said, do you want me to make those changes now or later? And I recommend he wait until the September 3 review with this review to see if there was anything else picked up that they should be looking at.
Okay.
Okay? I'll print that entire email message.
So will these pages to be inserted in here, or will you just?
I don't know yet. You guys need to review this also. So I figured he may as well wait and get the full review.
Okay.
That was my advice to him.
Thoughts, Rob?
I think that we discussed, I would really like to request that they come back with some way of indicating with inspection.
Mm-hmm. I will do that.
In whole, whole review.
Mary?
No, no comment.
So that's pretty much it for this application, isn't it?
Okay. It has extensive maps. In that case, we will go to findings of facts. So you're the ski way, no? You all want that, I guess?
Oh, I didn't know that the agenda got changed, you know? Okay. The last agenda I saw had all kinds of little discussion things. But I think I'm going to go in the middle.
Okay. Number six, findings of fact, Sunday River Skiway Corporation, South Bridge Bicycle Park, application 25-288, which last I knew was incomplete?
Right, because the application still.
Okay. So should we table that for the next meeting?
Exactly.
Okay. And this. And show that Ted is coming back to the table.
Heidi.
Hope I didn't embarrass Ford too much.
Let the minutes show that the chair has resumed his position where he was, he said. Why can't you seat good?
I don't know. She left her reports. She might be copying that email from me.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So she's next up on the agenda.
Yes, she's next up on the agenda. We'll move on to open discussion. Open discussion from people? Rob? Heidi?
No, I'm still researching a little bit on the sequence that we're going to move over, but I haven't finished that yet.
Okay. As a new member, I hope that you have previous planning board experience, right?
Correct.
Do you have any questions as to how the planning board works that we can discuss right now? It is a group, since you can't do it outside the group because that constitutes a quorum, which is a unknown?
I don't think so. I'm just reviewing them. We've also been researching a little bit about, we talked about Calabasas Valley or other areas that might have some.
You're talking about the rules and procedures.
Correct.
I'm just talking about the general planning board as a whole and the review process, how it works.
I'm good right now, thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I think in general, in the near future, it'd be nice to have a working session where we can pass more discussion about procedures and ask questions.
What do you mean by a working session?
More of a discussion, if there's nothing else on the agenda.
Okay, because these are working sessions.
Understood.
Okay.
Maybe with some more dedicated topics perhaps.
And that's, I agree with you entirely on that. There's lots to be discussed. There's lots to be discussed that though might be, have to hold off for a bit.
Sure. Of note, I'm scheduled to do the training on, but the earliest one that I could get through the account administrator was October, so.
Train you for, which training is that?
The planning board?
Yeah.
And the appeals board. Yeah, they do it together, NMA's, planning and everything.
I didn't know one was scheduled.
I didn't either, because I deleted it.
The statewide training, I think.
Yeah.
So she just found it for me to.
Is this? I'm confused, I remember. I'm confused. Are we talking about the freedom of access? Or are we talking about the seminar that MMA has?
The seminar, right.
I don't think any was scheduled.
October twenty-eighth, I'm signed up.
If you can, if you can do that in person, I would suggest, highly suggest instead of over the, on the computer. It's much better in person, I mean, done it both ways.
Do you know where it's being held?
Okay. You're not going to drop it back, or, but, yeah, I don't know.
Normally, normally they have one in October, October, I guess.
Yeah, we've got always in that style.
They just, they just had one in July in report. All right. Pooch? Open discussion?
The hallmark beside us home with was forever extensive.
Did that sound on the agenda? That needs to be tabled for future discussion.
Oh, okay. I just thought I mentioned it was extensive.
Okay. Yeah, and I, that was taken off of the agenda, really, for other reasons that we won't discuss here. All right, I would like to pass on a gentle reminder to the board, although I'm sure we're all aware of this, that we are a self-sufficient board. That means we do not have a planner to assist us, and we do not have a legal staff. Unfortunately, that puts the onus on us as a board to do all that work in preparation that bigger towns and cities have a planner to do. That's a big commitment, a very big commitment. We are fortunate to have Becky as a recording secretary. But Becky's job is to transcribe what goes on in the meeting, in the meeting. She is not the planner.
Oh.
And, 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 and she cannot wordsmith poorly articulated motions, findings of fact, and conclusions of law. That's not her job. She has to put them down verbatim.
Sounds like them out of our mouth.
Exactly. That's why we've got the paper orders. Our ordinance, as we all are either know or are learning, is extremely comprehensive, extremely detailed. And much keeping for a much, you're keeping for a much bigger town or city that has a planner. Unfortunately, we do not. So, it's up to us to do that. In any given application, there are going to be at least thirty-one motions for findings of fact and conclusions of law. At least thirty. Probably more. Those motions with findings of fact and conclusions of law should not be done on the fly. There's no way that we can get a well-articulated motion stated in the findings of fact concisely and conclusions of law ad hoc, on the fly. So I ask everybody, all of us, not just myself, that all of us, to come with our motions prepared, with our findings of fact prepared, and with our conclusions of law prepared, so that we can articulate them clearly, concisely. To Becky for transcription into the minutes. And let's see. Finally, most motions need to have findings of fact that tie back to evidence that was submitted by the applicant. Or otherwise submitted during any of the review, the reviews. So the evidence might have been submitted by the town, such as our engineering consultants, et cetera, et cetera. But every finding of fact needs to point back to evidence submitted by the applicant or collected by the board during the review process. We just can't sit there and say, "Well, it's just common knowledge that the, the river there is dead, and there's no trout. We haven't seen any trout in that river for years." We just can't say that. All right, so I will get off my soapbox. Our next meeting is September third. Uh, we do have one item on the agenda, and it's continuation of application twenty-five-two-eight-six. Do you have any other new business?
Nope, nothing else coming. Has a closed business today.
All right. Uh, I asked Dr. Kennedy, Rob, anything, well, Heidi, yes?
Did you have a CEO report you want?
I did know, I already read the email and the record, and then I answered it out of the final version.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heidi. Rob? Meredith? Heidi? Pooch? Becky?
I will not be present September third.
Where are you going?
Uh, to an E M A meeting. My boss had to make the decision for me. I was like, "I can't do this." Tell me where you want me to be, but she chose.
E M A is what? Emergency management agency.
Down in Solfero.
Oh, yeah, you ought to do that.
Yeah. So I had to check.
All right, I will enter in a motion to adjourn the August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board.
Uh, we made a motion that we adjourn the August twenty, twentieth, twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting, and be here on September third.
Second.
A motion has been made with a second to adjourn this meeting, and reconvene back on the third of September.
One?
Two.
Three? This meeting is adjourned.